It's five forty-six. Call the meeting of the Johnson County Planning Commission for Tuesday, January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three to order, and we have a statement that needs to be read. If you would read that for us.
Do you like me to read the statement then call roll?
Yes.
Okay. This is a statement about the hybrid meeting. This meeting is now being recorded. Please silence all electronic devices. This meeting is being held in the board hearing room with the planning commission members attending in person. There is also an option for virtual attendance on Zoom webinar. If you are using Zoom, you may participate. Using your computer, phone, or other device, Zoom participants chat will be disabled once the meeting begins. If you have trouble with Zoom, call nine one three seven one five one seven zero zero. If you would like to speak during the public comment section of the meeting, please use the raise hand function in the Zoom app to notify staff of your desire to speak. To activate this function, click raise hand in the webinar controls at the bottom of the screen. By telephone, you may raise your hand by dialing star nine. We will take comments from in-person attendees first, followed by Zoom participants. The Zoom moderator will call on individuals who have raised their hand. All speakers will be limited to two minutes unless the chair designates a different time period in order to accommodate all the speakers. When your name is called by the moderator, your microphone will be unmuted. Please state your name and address for the record, followed by your comments. There will be a ten second remaining warning sound. Board members and presenters, please state your name each time you begin talking, and please speak into the microphone so that comments can be transcribed for the record. This is a public meeting. We are presenting live and recording the meeting.
Thank you. Would you take the roll call now, please?
Yes. Chris Iliff.
Here.
George Lund.
Here.
Roger Mason.
Here.
Jim Neese is absent. Dave Johns.
Here.
Lindsey Grissay. Kelly Rast.
Present.
Mike Levin is absent. Randy Downing. Terry Atwell on Zoom.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right. Thanks very much. The next item on the agenda is a period of public comment. If there's somebody who would like to expend their three minutes of time for, or two minutes of time on public comment, please stand up and head over to the lectern. If not, then the next item is the disclosure of conflict of interest and ex parte communications by members. And I'll start off by saying that I have no such conflicts of interest or ex parte communications. Anyone else? All right. Appears there's nothing to disclose in that case. With regard to the agenda, I'm going to make a recommendation that we make a minor revision to the agenda as it is put before us. There is an issue that Mr. Leipzig and I have been discussing for a couple of months that deserves a little bit of attention, and I know there's one member of the public here who would like to perhaps address it as well. And it really has to do with codes enforcement. That is how we go about enforcing the zoning and subdivision regulations that we spend many hours, sometimes weeks and months, making, amending, and correcting. And then we have situations that come up where people either unknowingly or wittingly do not abide by those zoning and subdivision regulations. And I know this will be of considerable interest if the solar power plants in the western part of the county ever come to fruition. I think there'll be a lot of people who will be wanting to know how to enforce the regulations that are made with regard to those and that have been made with regard to those. The item, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna start by letting Mr. Leipzig talk about in general how we go about enforcing codes, and then I'm gonna open it up for public comment after that.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Jay Leipzig, Planning Director. Just as a general note for code enforcement stipulated in Article Six of our zoning and subdivision regulations, we follow very typical county regulations in terms of code enforcement. The county does employ a part-time code enforcement officer that works approximately about twenty-three hours a week. I think some weeks less, some sometimes more than that. I think a significant, and by on a complaint basis, so that we don't actively go out and seek enforcement, like some cities type of their contact with code enforcement officers. However, in the county, we go by a complaint basis. One of the things we did completed in two thousand and twenty-two is creating a portal for code enforcement complaints and issues. And I can, Sean Pennley, our deputy director, can quickly kind of walk through that very, just a brief summary. But in general, you, your basic information of what the code violation is, it's anonymous, it goes to any information that's submitted into that. It goes to our planner of the day, which is a rotating, rotation of all the planning staff can look at it, including our code enforcement officer. So it's, it's a way to quickly address things or try to address things. And I'll let Sean speak here in just a minute, but one of the points to note with code enforcement, oftentimes they're not easy fixes. I wish they were. I know coming from a background, a municipal background with the city where it's grass mowing, for example, and when the lawn gets over eight inches tall, you can typically mow it. Once you provide notification, and it happens fairly quickly and fairly regularly, you have a list of frequent violators on that, that you're able to send some letters to. The county, it's more general since we don't follow a property maintenance code, but we do have some, there's, there's issues that require enforcement, such as illegal car lots. We have conditions and unconditional use permits that, that we review, contractor storage yards, that type of thing, storage of equipment that we look at. So that, that's a high level overview. And then I'm gonna let Sean kind of briefly talk about, kind of go through that, that portal. And then I could also provide a few summaries of cases this past year that we've been able to resolve.
Thanks, Jay. Sean Pennley, County Planning Staff. So as Jay mentioned, our website, we do have information that's available on the planning homepage for all of our zoning regulations, also options for code enforcement. So if there are any questions regarding code enforcement in the unincorporated area of the county, they could, the public can easily find it here. So we have a link to our zoning regulations with any potential violations, but also we list out examples of possible code enforcement violations in the county. As Jay said, there are differences between city jurisdiction and county in terms of zoning violations. Obviously, it's under our jurisdiction, whatever the potential violations are, but we have examples of those listed on the website. We also have an option, if there's ever any question from the public as far as an outstanding violation or a potential violation, we always encourage the public to contact our office. We have our main planning number on this website. But then there's also an option for an anonymous code complaint form that we have on our website. So in this page, we have an option to enter an address, and you can certify or verify whether or not it's in the unincorporated or it's in the city. If it's in the city, we direct the public to contact the respective city. But you can enter the information for the address in question, and you can enter in the potential code complaint. And that again can be anonymous, or you can provide your information if you would like response and follow-up. But we do accept that information, and as Jay mentioned, that does go to the planner on duty. That is also forwarded to myself and our code enforcement officer. So we receive that information generally the day after it's entered. And then we, we respond and inspect the site or make contact with the owner within forty-eight hours of receiving that. Whenever we have an opportunity to go visit the site, we do contact the owner of the subject property to make contact and so that we can actually visit with them on the property. So that's just a quick run-through of the website and our code complaint form, our online code complaint form. But again, we always encourage the public just to contact the planning department, and we can walk through any of the specific requirements as well.
Sean, what, what is the process? This is Chris Iliff. What is the process when a violation is reported and the landowner is informed of the violation, and the landowner refuses to take steps to comply?
The process, if a suspected violation is observed and staff determines that it is in fact a violation, a notice of violation is sent to the property owner, and they receive that by certified mail. They are then given a certain period of time to bring the issue into compliance. Generally, it's thirty days for most violations, just depends on the issue. We allow for the applicant or the owner to bring the property into compliance. So we go through that process. If they refuse or do not adhere to that timeline, a second notice of violation is issued. Then if there's no response to that, then usually the procedure would be to issue a citation to a codes court, and so they will go through the process of working within the codes court. That's rare, but it does happen. So that's, that's a general process. But again, there's, it's a situation where we need to work with the owner to make sure that they're bringing it into compliance, or that at least they're actively working towards that goal. And so it, it often can vary depending on the issue in question, but that's, that's the general process.
Who is the judge in the codes court?
That's a good question. Maybe I might see if our legal staff, Bob Ford, is here. He might have a little bit more background on that.
Excuse me?
I, I'm just asking because I don't know the answer.
Bob Ford, Legal Department. I was the code court prosecutor for many years, but I have not been for the last several, and they have a pro temp judge, local Alatha or Overland Park attorney that's appointed by the board, and that's his only judge role, has a one day a month docket over here that he handles all of the code court violations and including all the park and rec violations. And that's by far the bulk of his docket are park and recreation. But I, I've been before him a couple times, but I haven't seen him enough to committed his name to my.
I don't need to know the name. I just needed to know that there is, is a person that is designated to do that.
A person and a special court. We have codes court is a special court just for Johnson County code violations by statute.
Mr. Chairman, one thing, Jay Leipzig, I wanted to also note that part of this process, and there's quite a bit of research that goes, it's involved in these cases too, in terms of reviewing the case, looking at it. We, we schedule visits oftentimes. It takes several visits to ensure that what we think or what has been suspected is going on is truly occurring. So that takes a while, also working with the legal department and, and going through that process and ensuring that everything is accurate and, and we're following our stipulations. So it does take a little bit of time. Bob Ford has been our, one of our main attorneys working on code enforcement cases. There's also another attorney by the name of Ryan Hager. It's part of the legal team that also does some code enforcement cases as well.
At this time, at my invitation, we do have one member of the public here who has been working with you, I know, Mr. Leipzig, for some months with regard to what appears to me to be an obvious code violation. Mr. Dugan, do you have anything you'd like to say in furtherance of this issue? Please state your name and address.
Daryl Dugan, seventy-two eighty-seven West one hundred and ninety-eighth Street, Stillwell, Kansas. A little history on me, I've been in the Stillwell area for seventy years in July. I own a commercial building down there that I operate my business out of. I'm also a Class A licensed contractor in Johnson County. I sat on the local township zoning board in Stillwell for a number of years. I have a very good grasp of what Johnson County wants in the unincorporated area. The problem that Chris and Jay are helping me with didn't start last year. We're in our sixth year. It fell on deaf ears in the planning department with Dean Palos and Paul Greeley. Only when Jay Leipzig got here did he agree to take up our charge. We have a commercial building, commercial structure down there that is contracted with Kansas City Power and Light for security lighting. We had gone over this lighting situation with the previous people in planning for four years. Fell on deaf ears. The agreed upon lighting for the project originally has been changed numerous times with no input, the planning for approval. And most recently, most recently meaning the last twelve months, Kansas City Power and Light decided to change out either a mercury vapor light or some other light that Jay can explain with a new LED light. I live about a hundred and fifty yards behind this facility. Now, some of you received emails from me in the last year showing the obtrusive nature of this light. I invited Jay to come to the location to visit, and he stood on my son's front porch. My son lives across the way from me. About nine thirty or ten o'clock at night, and we could speak to each other and see every expression on everybody's face. And this is two hundred and fifty yards off of this location. It was only made aware to me in the last sixty days that there's actually a code against this. You people spent a tremendous amount of time developing codes, plans for the county or the unincorporated area. And I'm, I'm just mystified why a situation like this could carry on as long as it has with the inability to tell Kansas City Power and Light to take this light down. We've said from the get-go that the light doesn't need to come down. The light needs to be directed to the ground and shielded. The arguments we received were that this was security lighting, and it would be a great expense to the business owner to change it. I am a business owner down there. I know the county would not approve this kind of lighting on any of my commercial property, none whatsoever. It was interesting to watch the reporting process that you have on your site. Because it's not, the complaints are not anonymous. In the course of this, in the last six months, my family was identified to the business owner and to the person that owns the property that he rents from. One of them came to my home on a Sunday when I was having dinner with my family with a concept to physically straighten us out. We disarmed the situation, and he politely backed out of my driveway and ran over the neighbor's mailbox, of which I put back up out of my pocket. This is completely out of hand. If there are teeth in your codes, if your codes are meant to be something, if your codes are meant to direct us, then enforce your codes. We shouldn't be having this conversation. Now, the fix for this, I'm told, Jay informed me just for this minute meeting, that Kansas City Power and Light has agreed to put a shield on this light. Jay asked me early on if I would accept that. He said, I will accept it when the light does not bleed off of that property onto mine or anybody else's. So if we need to put a shield on it to determine if that works, I'm also told that the county is going to pay for the shield. I find that the county wouldn't pay to fix anything I had that was not up to code. If the shield doesn't work, then I'm going to be right back here. Now, over this past two or three years, I haven't come to these meetings because of COVID and that sort of thing. But we're out of that now. And I will be back to report. But it really shouldn't come to that. Kansas City Power and Light should be directed to either fix that light or take it down, and your code should be applied. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Chairman? I'd like to note for the record that Lindsey Grissay arrived at five fifty-two.
Thank you. Welcome.
This is Kelly Rast. I have a question. Wouldn't this also fall under the Stillwell's lighting requirements too?
Commissioner Rast. Have to abide by that? I believe that the, there's a, the lighting requirements for the Stillwell plan are very vague, but that's great. It doesn't absolutely fall under that Stillwell plan, falls under their county's lighting requirements. And I, I, we've been working with, with Evergy, and I appreciate Mr. Dugan's concern, they're, they're very valid, was over there looking at, at the light. It just took a while to work with, with Evergy, the property owners, and they have agreed to install this visor, and I'm hoping that is done here in the next, possibly even this evening or a week, it should be very soon. So that's, that is good news. I'm curious and I'm hopeful that that will work if it, if it's pointed downward with a shield that will still allow the protection for the, the sales lot, but not bleed into the Dugan's property.
I was, Kelly Rast has something Ken Clinging Smith should be involved in to make sure it's being done right and follows. I mean, I'm a hundred percent agree with you, Mr. Dugan, and I think that's terrible. And ever since I've been on the board, Jay can attest, that's my biggest thing is how do we give citizens the feeling that something will be done if we go ahead and prove something, and then people don't do the right thing? So I think this, this is terrible.
Mr. Rast, Jay Leipzig again. Ken Clinging Smith is aware, we've actually, we've talked about it, and also working with the commissioner in that area too.
Okay.
Chairman Iliff, I have a quick question for Mr. Pennley. I was kind of curious on, I think this website is really interesting, if it was truly anonymous, that would be even better. I was curious for permit violations, is there a similar website where you can, for any conditional use permits, stormwater, SWIP permits or others? Is there a reporting mechanism, the way that code enforcement appears to be kind of open to the public and that information? I was wondering if there was kind of a sister site for that? Because to me, you know, it seems like the issue, at least in the Board of Zoning Appeals, a lot of the issues, one of the big cases that we had in that, matters that we had in that board was a permit violation, conditional use permit, stormwater pollution prevention permit, a dig permit, and a grading permit. And right now, the only way I'm aware of for the public to report those violations is to do so by phone or in person or by email. Maybe having a similar reporting structure might be helpful to open the public up, and especially if we could truly make it anonymous.
Sean Pennley, Planning Staff. We do not have a specific reporting site on the website for conditional use permit violations, but this code enforcement violation complaint form is really to capture any and all complaints. That can be a conditional use permit, it can be an outstanding issue regarding just development, it could be just a general observation that it looks like and it appears to be. Oftentimes, a lot of these are reported because they have no permit at all. There was never a conditional use permit.
Sure.
But if there is, certainly the public can enter their information on this website. It is anonymous if, and, you know, a property owner or a neighbor would like to just enter the complaint without giving their information, that is anonymous, and that still, we go through that process. But we always encourage anyone to call us because it's usually just easiest to get that, get the background and make sure we understand exactly what the issues are. Oftentimes, staff will have questions for the complaint and just to know, what is it specifically that you're observing? So we always encourage anyone to contact our, our office, and that's why we have our main planning number there too. But we don't have any specific site just for CUPs, but certainly we encourage everyone just to enter that information or call us.
But Commissioner Grissay, Jay Leipzig, the intention of this portal though is to include all of those, those types of uses. So it gets, can be, obviously that's included as one of the complaints, so that was the intention is to use it for all of them.
Yeah, and this is Commissioner Grissay. I think that's an awesome thing. I would just tell you as a member of the public, especially with the list of potential code, you know, this says code enforcement, that to me would signal not permit violations because codes are typically, you know, kind of statutory or written regulations. And since, I might suggest that maybe that was specifically listed as an option because then I think that would at least open the public up to thinking that permitted or unpermitted, you know, conditional use permits, not just those, but stormwater pollution permits, dig permits, grading permits, all those type of permits, you know, that, I think that people drive by often in construction sites, and if you see a bunch of mud going into the, the road, you know, it might be difficult to know what to do about that.
I'm sure your points are well founded.
When editorial content, driving Kansas City Power and Light, seventy-five years ago, they came to the zoning board in Stillwell, the Aubrey Township Zoning Board at the time, and were seeking permit to build their building that they have, it's about a quarter mile southwest of this violation. And one of the things that we were very concerned about was lighting. They assured us that they would put in state-of-the-art lighting that would not bleed off of their site. They were good to their word. It is a wonderful lighting situation that they have out there that lights up the area that needs to be lighted for safety at night, and it does not bleed off, and it's hardly noticeable when you drive by at night. So it's not like they don't know how to do it.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the November twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty-two meeting. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes for November twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty-two? During the end of here, a motion to approve is written.
Kelly Rast make a motion to approve the minutes from November twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, as written.
First line and second. First line and second, in all its favor, in this thing, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The minutes will therefore be approved. Next item on the agenda is the two thousand and twenty-three strategic plan and year-end review.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Jay Leipzig, Planning Director. This item will be fairly short. I have done this in preceding years with the exception of, of our time with, with COVID when we were meeting online. However, for the last several years, we prepared a summary report that basically follows an order throughout the year of the cases that were talked about or discussed by the planning commission. And this is more of a reference document, frankly, as a, as a summary of what, what you accomplished and what we've done in two thousand and twenty-two, is a very busy year. And I'm just starting on page one. I, I might skip over some of these things because it's also under the directory report, and staff is going to be able to provide additional information to you as well. I will just tell you that if you, if you look at it, and if you read it, if you have questions, please, please contact me as well. I'd be happy to talk more about it. But we have, of course, the utility scale, solar facility regulations, working on our airport compatibility plans, working on our sunflower army ammunition plant, land use plan update, and then accessory building regulations that we started discussing at the very end of, of last year, that we'll have further discussion on this evening. And then our adoption of the bylaws to the planning commission. The other point I wanted to make on that is we have adopted by the planning commission, we're now moving on to the zoning boards and going through that same exercise with our Southwest zoning board, then the Southeast zoning board, then the Northwest zoning board, be going through that process as well. We began the year with our zoning and subdivision regulations audit. On September twenty-sixth, we had a planning commission workshop that was a joint meeting between this planning commission as well as the Board of County Commissioners. meeting between um this planning commission as well as the board of county commissioners. Uh, so it, it provides a summary information for you for that throughout the year. Moving on to, as you recall, every, every meeting, we have summary update for all of the activities that have happened with the zoning boards. We've included that same information in the summary format for you for this, this report that um talks about the board of zoning appeals cases, our southwest consolidated zoning board. And we move on to the southeast consolidated zoning board, or excuse me, northwest consolidated zoning board and the southeast consolidated zoning board. And that's all of the cases that were addressed or um discussed by, by all three of those zoning boards. And we also have included the Johnson County Executive Airport new century cases. And you can, as you can see, there's, there's been a lot of them in twenty-twenty-two. And it provides a brief overview of what that case was. And then on the last page of the report is our twenty-twenty-three strategic action plan. And this is just a general guide for discussion uh throughout this year. Now, this, this may change as, as things come up that other issues that are unanticipated, uh things that, that uh other bigger cases there or uh uh issues that, that arise that we need, need to um to also review. But this does provide a kind of a yearly uh a guestment, if you will, or strategic plan this year, anticipated uh discussion areas as we go through the year. So you'll see tonight discussing this in, in March, we're having a presentation from the Overland Park. Uh, planning staff is, is doing an overview of the comprehensive plan update. Uh, I believe it's called Forward OP uh will be, or excuse me, Framework OP that will be um presented in March. We also have our uh conceptual land use plan, the update for, for Sunflower will be presented in April. Uh, and there again, those, these dates may change as we uh to show discussion or if things are slowed down a little bit, but this at least keeps us uh kind of a general guide as you go throughout this year. Um, also in February, we'd like to have a, a, a training, uh additional training or, or workshop with our uh chief legal counsel, Peg Trent, to talk about uh this kind of a continued discussion on our, our public meeting that we had in September. That was, if you remember, call, there was a, a lot of slides, a lot of very detailed information. So I think we really could have broken that into two separate meetings. So we'd like to have a continuation of that as well. Um, so with that, that kind of summarizes uh high level overview of what, what this document is and what, what its purpose is. It's, it's a working document. It may change as we go throughout the year, but at least provides a a reference for you for the past year. You could see that the, the cases that have been discussed um by the planning commission as well as by the zoning boards. And then as a guide to uh, uh as we move throughout the year in terms of approximate dates for when things will be discussed. Then I'd, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about that.
Any questions for Mr. Leipzig? That will come to the next item on the agenda.
Thank you.
Which is uh the regulation of accessory buildings.
Good evening, Michelle Lanniger, planning staff. Um, this is a continued discussion based on um direction given by the planning commission at the uh November twenty-ninth meeting. Um, where I brought to you some questions, some thoughts and um the planning commission gave some direction. So um what I have for you tonight is um draft text, which I know can get a little hairy and boring. Um, what I'm going to do, I, I really tried in the memo that provided um was to give a summary of all the changes in the different articles. There are, based on what I have proposed, there are eight articles that need to be amended um with the bulk of the changes being in Article eighteen, which is accessory structures and buildings and uses. And then uh probably seventeen, which is a supplementary uh chapter for height and bulk and area. And then twenty-three is the conditional use permit section. So really to remind you, the intent of the text amendments um is to really align the um allowances for accessory buildings uh in the unincorporated county. Um, we've seen many conditional use permits for oversized accessory buildings over the past uh ten, eleven years. And um this is something, you know, typically if you see repetitive things, um it's something we need to look at. So um just going through the memo here, um and please feel free to stop me if you have questions about a specific section um or if you want more detail. Um, I have also included the draft regulations removed from the actual text. Um, so it's just the sections that we are specifically proposing amendments to. Um, otherwise you would be getting a packet that's about two inches um in size for each specific um article. So starting with Article eighteen, again, this is where the bulk of the changes are. Um, really, we, I'm proposing to rework the section that um to my page here, with the standards and regulations for um the accessory buildings. And really trying to clarify it and then increase that permitted um allowance. So today, as the code states, um you get a certain amount of accessory building on your property based on the, the area. And then if you want um something over that, there's a conditional use process for that. So uh Steph has proposed an increase of this is really what I'm focusing on from page two of the um memo is the, this is a comparison of what is permitted today versus um what is proposed based on the comments. Um, at the last meeting for size, staff had thrown out a number um which tended, which was the median of the proposed buildings for CUPs for the past eleven years. That was fourteen and some change. Um, the commission direction was to increase that to the average, which is um an increase of eighty-seven percent uh ended up being eighty-six point six percent um for the allowable area for the main uh floor of an accessory building. So the proposal is to increase from nine hundred square feet to sixteen eighty square feet. Um, there's some, I did some finessing with those numbers to get um usable numbers. The sixteen eighty would be the area of a forty by forty building. So that kind of puts it into reference, easy to um to base something off of. And um then the additional um for the acre after up to ten acres um changed from three hundred to five hundred and sixty.
Uh, just to, this is Commissioner Grisay, just a quick question. Um, why was, why are the last two columns not scaled by acreage versus in the first two are?
Um, because they are um they're kind of add-ons. Um, the open walled area is what um a lot of people will come forward with is either a carport. So um something that will have no walls or a gazebo, giant gazebo. Um, also for a lot of people are putting like porches on buildings. Um, so that, that is typically also something that we see that needs to be increased. We increased that from two hundred to four hundred. So what that gives you is um and because that number was never based on the area, it's just a, a straight number. Um.
Yeah, maybe, maybe Commissioner Grisay here, maybe the reason I ask is if you were to put a ten-foot porch, covered porch on a forty-foot building, I mean, you're going to probably exceed this.
No, that would be a ten by forty.
Or I mean, like, or a twenty, you know, a lot of people on accessory buildings are adding, you know, kind of a porch. And I guess I was just kind of curious if, if you're scaling the main area, it might make sense if you're, so you're not looking at a ton of variances. But I was just, I was kind of curious what the rationale was because to me, those two things, it seems like would scale together, but maybe I'm missing a, a kind of a rationale why they wouldn't.
And, and they could. They never did. So that's why I didn't change that. Um, based on some of the stuff.
Sorry, just interrupt. I think also architecturally, there, there's probably going to be a certain percentage of how much lean to or open area they would add on to a building without it looking funnier. So I think that would probably drive the percentage of the open area wall.
But I, I, Commissioner Grisay, I totally agree. It just, it seemed odd. You know, if we're allowing a much larger, you know, building outside and you wanted, it would seem like the maximum porch area, to your point, would scale with that building, maybe not scale with the acreage, but it would scale with the building. But I, I was just curious at the rationale.
And then if, if that's something that the planning commission would like to see is like a percentage, um, that's, that's an option too. Um, my rationale for the four hundred square feet um is something that it's based on a couple of different things. Um, the in planning, typical porches, they say are usable if they're at least six to eight feet deep by the width of the building. So um if at a minimum you get a forty by forty building, that would give you an extra ten feet by the width of the building. So that was my rationale. Um, the, the ten feet deep gives you a, a nice amount. It would give you the amount for a table with chairs around it and still not feel real like you can't back up before you fall off the edge. Um.
When the, the Kelly Rass, the slope of the roof is going to limit you at some point too. They can only do so.
Um.
It, yes. High, so.
Depends on.
It's going to self-limit itself.
It depends on how it's designed. Um, a lot of them, if they're, if they're added on, you're going to run into that problem with how much you can can or lever over before the trusses run into a situation. Um, if it's, if it's considered as part of the overall building, they were, they will overspan the trusses to account for that. So they could make it be, you know, four times as much, whatever they need. It, it kind of depends on the engineering and when they attach it and, and some of those things. So. Um. Anybody else have any questions on that? And then the next on the, on the memo, I also added um this chart. I know um Commissioner Neese had asked about, well, if I have four acres, what do I get now versus what do I get uh with the proposed? So um, these are just some numbers to, for each acre between one and nine. Um, just to give you some sort of visual as to um what the changes would be. And so we have in um that Article eighteen rearranged it to, and I, I apologize, it gets a little messy with the actual track changes and things because things are not only moved, they're, they're deleted and added. Um, we've really tried to uh focus things, group things together, make it more user friendly for people to understand. Um, not just us, but the general population. Um, we include the performance standards in um the first section, which includes the location, um whether it can be in a front yard or not. Um, those have not changed. I'm not proposing to change that. Um, that is all what the current regulations allow for. Um, there are some setbacks um requirements. And um, let's see, what else? Um. Even gets messy for me. Um, some details about lots, accessory buildings on lots that are zoned for um our planned retail business and planned employment districts. Those are really taken care of with the planned uh district process. Um, so we've kind of pulled some of that out um to avoid confusion. And then um there's some special side yard setbacks for those um planned districts, PRUR, the PRB and the PEC districts. Um, we've really tried to simplify it. This was very confusing, um even for staff. Um, so that's a simplification. Um. And then again, we have the main floor area, which is what we just looked at. Uh, the maximum height per district that hasn't changed. I just put it in a table form. I find that it's easier to look at. Um, and then for the number of accessory buildings permitted per lot, currently it is three and um the proposal is to bump it to four. Um, we run into situations where um people will have old outbuildings. They may have a pump house. They may have a farrowing house. They may have, you know, a large chicken coop. Some of those things where, you know, really you could probably be okay with some of those smaller things. Um, it still comes into play that you have X number of, of um area per lot. And you can split that into um four accessory buildings. Um, I just wanted to back up to the total main floor area for accessory buildings. Um, we did clarify in here, um, there's what we're calling a bonus building. Um, that's currently in the code. It's not all that. Um, but it's, it gives um provisions for a tool shed up to a certain size and a pool mechanical building up to two hundred square feet. You, those are kind of exempt. Um, honestly, trying to clarify it, um, it doesn't matter whether you keep tools or pool equipment or what you keep in that structure. Um, we're really just focusing on it to be that you get one of those. We do have people that um will go ahead and say, oh, well, then I can have five two hundred square feet um accessory buildings then, right? Well, the code is not clear. So that's something um as staff that we wanted to make sure was clear that the intent and how we have been enforcing it is that you get one tool shed, more or less, a small, you know, something you go pick up at Home Depot when you put together and such. Um, two hundred square feet or smaller. So that's almost like your bonus building that um everybody gets. And it doesn't, it's not cumulative to um your open floor area. It's not or main floor area. It's not cumulative to your open walled area. So it's, it's completely separate. It's kind of a free. open walled area. So it's, it's completely separate. It's kind of a freebie. Um, you don't like the name, I can think of something else.
But this is Commissioner Garcia, I was just curious about the rationale for it.
Um.
Yeah, or is it just a legacy thing that's always been there?
It's a legacy thing. Um, it's kind of nice. We'll, we'll get things like small, um, small tool sheds. We get those pool houses with just the equipment in it. Um, what else? Um, chicken coops, dog kennels. You know, it could be just, just something small. And really that two hundred square feet is pretty minimal to no impact on, um, the different properties, no matter what size they are. Um, sorry to go back. Just want to make sure that I caught everything in, um, in that accessory building performance standard section. Um, and like I said, most of that is in there, except for, um, what that increase in what is permitted, which is really the basis for this. Um, part two of the basis for this is, uh, Section B in that Article eighteen. And that is the new process so that, um, applicants can have an avenue to vary from those standards um, in order to request something outside of that. And we are proposing to remove it from the conditional use process. So that way, um, there's no, um, expiration. So, so then the zoning boards aren't approving a building for twenty years and then having the applicant or the property owner have to come back for a building that has been fine. Um, it's, it's unlikely that if it went through the approval pro- process at the zoning board, that it really made that as it's proposed, if it's built, it's unlikely that it would cause a significant change um, in the next ten, twenty years. Um, usually where we run into situations where, um, an accessory building is then converted into a, um, business is where we would run into a situation, um, with that. And then that would fall into your code violations because the use is not permitted. So that, that kind of goes off on its own. So if you, what we're proposing is an accessory building permit. Um, this is, uh, mirrored after our, um, accessory dwelling unit permit. Um, it's a, it's the same process as a conditional use permit, which is an application. We do mailed and, um, notice in newspapers. Um, we do a staff report that goes to the zoning board. And that zoning board makes a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. And they make the final action. Process is the same. It just removes that requirement out of the conditional use permit process for a term. But it allows all the same things. So what you'll see in this section is, um, the explanation of the permit. Um, the purpose, and I know this was talked about in November, um, about what are the details of what it would be. So now you get to see that, um, you know, it, if you can't meet any of those performance standards, the size, the location, um, those things, this is now your avenue. Um, lays out the general provisions. Um, what is required for the application, which is just what we would get now with the conditional use permit. Um, it sets up the general development and performance standards. Um, and then the, the review, which is, um, if you look on page twenty-one of the attachment, um, it talks about the issuance of the AVP. And now those are more or less the review criteria. That's exactly what they re, what the staff reviews conditional use permits on today. It's same review criteria right out of that article. So we're looking into the same things. It does pull into play, um, the area. Um, your, um, Golden versus Overland Park review area, your Golden review, um, the surrounding neighborhood, um, compatibility. Uh, and all of those similar things. Um, this, this process, like the conditional use process, allows for the zoning board and the Board of County Commissioners to add any other appropriate stipulations. So if, um, it is felt that this would be okay as long as, um, a fence along the property line is maintained. That can still be added as a stipulation. Um, so it's really the same process, just a way of differ, of doing it a little bit differently. And then there's the revocation process, which is the same for, um, a conditional use permit. Um, and then unfortunately, that removed, um, two letters from that section of that article. So the rest of the article is relettered. Um, before I move on from the articles, does anybody have any comments, questions, thoughts?
Questions?
I know it's a lot to.
Dave Johns, I wasn't here at the November meeting, so I might be asking a dumb question. It stops at ten acres, so after ten acres, it.
There's no restrictions.
Okay.
The only thing that, um, is required, if your ten acres are over, is that you, uh, maintain those building setbacks and heights of the zoning district.
And then does this include like a, a lean to, the three wall, like?
Yep. And that, that's your, that's your, well, not three wall. It would be one or two walls is your open walled, um, accessory building. So if it, if it has three walls, um, it's considered, um, enclosed based on our definitions that are already in the code. And, um, I made sure you'll see there's a little number three here. Um, try to put clarification in, in that, uh, table so that, um, we know what the open walled um, floor area is specifically, it says three to four open sides. And that's straight from the definitions, because flipping pages, forget it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then, um, and I didn't include all of this in the presentation, because it's a little um, cumbersome. Um, the Article seventeen and, um, twenty-three are, are the other kind of big changes. Um, the Article seventeen is really that Section nine, height, area, bulk by zoning district chart. Um, this just is reflected, it's just a summary chart of all the the standards for the district. So the changes are just to reflect what, um, is proposed in eighteen. Um, and then in Article twenty-three, which is the conditional use section, um, the proposal, since you would have the new process, is to remove anything in here which, um, deals with accessory buildings um, and allowing for conditional use permits through accessory buildings. Because you will either be able to apply for the accessory building permit or go with, um, the PEC and, or, yeah, PEC and PR the Plan Business District. Um, the, that is all done through that plan district process. So, um, those would go through that process instead. In which, um, that plan district process allows for, um, some of that tweaking um, based on the individual lots. Um, I know that was a lot. Um, all the other changes that are proposed, you flip through them, it's really just adding that new permit tech, text in there to allow it, uh, for a process. Um, a lot of places. Um, so that's what most of those, uh, little bitty changes are. Sometimes it's just a reference, since we're relitering that one section. Want to make sure that we don't reference a wrong section for our solar stuff. Um, so it's just the, the article and section reference that we're updating in a couple of places, too. So that's the summary. Um, what staff is recommending for tonight is for the Planning Commission to, um, have a discussion and give any direction. And then, um, you can direct staff to publish for a, um, public hearing at the March twenty eighth Planning Commission meeting on textual changes, if you feel prepared to do that.
This is Kelly Rast. Um, I think it looks good. It's everything we discussed in November that we pretty much were all in agreement with. I do have one question. Will everybody who does have, uh, an accessory building now just automatically get grandfathered in?
Um, what it'll be is that, um, yes, I mean, if they meet the regulations. So say that you have, we'll go back to this. If you have a four acre lot and you have a CUP for a six thousand square feet of accessory building, once that conditional use permit expires, you will then have to go back through, um, the AVP process, because you still don't meet the standards. So it would, it would, it would be what they would have to do today if we didn't change the standards. It's just a lot of those, what I say, we would be down to eleven or twelve. Um, with the changes. Uh, yeah, eleven. Um, the people that would no longer need it, need that CUP, it would just, it would be legal permitted by right.
Planning staff, I'll add that we do have a list of all of the previous condition to use permits that have been issued. And we're actually, we're going through that process right now for a few that we have that are due for renewal. If an example like this came, that where we had an accessory building that previously had a CUP, and if it meets the requirements under the new regulations, that would be a case where they would not need to get a renewal. Anyone else, though, that would exceed that if this gets adopted, uh, then, as Michelle said, they would have to then come back in to get a different permit, an accessory building permit. So it wouldn't be a CUP anymore, it'd be an accessory building permit, so they wouldn't be subject to terms or, uh, but they would have to get a separate permit. And that would carry forward.
What would that entail for them just to come in and fill something out or whatever?
The same processes they would have to, um, when that CUP expires, they would come in and apply for that ABP. And they would go through that process, same exact thing that they would have to do today. And, but they wouldn't ever have to come back.
Uh, Commissioner Garcia, would they have to pay, um, the full, is there a permit fee?
Um, we haven't established a permit fee for this at this time. Currently a CUP for an accessory building, um, the fee is seventy-five dollars, which is significantly less, I think maybe half, if not more, than what a tip any other CUP would be.
Uh, Dave Johns, in that example, so let's say they have four acres and they've got six thousand of ground floor. So when they do that, would you just approve that with the variance? Or would it, they wouldn't be taking down a part of their buildings?
No, no, no. It would, it would be the same process that they went through to, um, gain approval. It's just by a different name, and then they wouldn't have to come back.
You have the questions? If not, I think you can proceed on, uh, with, uh, with what you've got. Um, as I agree with Ms. Rast, that, um, it seems to really, don't pretend that unless that we brought, uh, last time. Frankly, I think it's, uh, you're improving.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda. Dates and other business.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Jay Life's Planning Director. Uh, just a quick update on, uh, item, uh, number one, the update on the Board of County Commissioners' actions. Those are included in my, my previous report. I'll be very brief on that. Uh, but, uh, moving on to the Director's Report. Uh, an update of New Century in the Executive Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan Updates. Uh, Michelle Cricks is available to, to address the commission quickly.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission. Michelle Cricks with Johnson County Planning. And I'm just going to give a quick, uh, update on the, uh, Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan Updates for both New Century Air Center and Johnson County Executive Airport. I know, um, over the last few months, uh, Sean and/or Jay have been, uh, providing kind of some quick updates for you. So I'm here this evening to, uh, kind of continue that. So, um, in October, um, we had our first Planning Advisory Committee meeting. We had our first public information workshop for both New Century Air Center and the Executive Airport. Now, we are holding those public information workshops separately. So we can, we're holding one at New Century Air Center to focus on the land uses around New Century Air Center. We're holding a separate one at, um, Johnson County Executive Airport to focus on the land uses around the Johnson County Executive Airport. We're kind of separating them since we have two separate plans. We're doing the public information workshop separately. Um, so with the holidays, we did have to put a little bit of a pause to kind of get through the holiday season. And also to give our consultants some, uh, time to, uh, work on some noise studies, to do some deep dive analysis on land uses. And now that we're kind of getting past the holidays, um, we are picking back up and we're gonna, uh, start our next, uh, round of meetings. So on January thirtieth, uh, staff and the, our consultant, uh, which is, uh, a Johnson County-based, uh, consultant, we are beho, we're holding a developer stakeholder meeting. So we have invited several developers um, that do a lot of, uh, do a lot of work around the airport. And, um, we're gonna hold that here on January thirtieth at two o'clock at the Administration Building. And that meeting is a chance for staff and a consultant uh, to meet with developers, to hear their comments, concerns, give them some plan updates, really kind of dive into what the, uh, what developers are facing as they're trying to work, not only with the, uh, zoning, uh, restrictions of the, uh, cities around the airport, but also with, um, having to try to meet the county standards to make sure that we are not impacting the operations of the airport. So it's really kind of a fine balance. And, um, so that'll be on two o'clock on the thirtieth. Um, then after the, uh, developer stakeholder meeting on thirtieth, we'll also be holding a, our second Planning Advisory Committee meeting. So that'll be here at the Administration Building as well. Um, and, uh, we'll be hearing back from our consultant some results of their analysis with the noise study and some of their, uh, deep dive and kind of talk about what those next steps are going to be. So after we have our, uh, public, our PAC meeting, um, we're gonna hold our second set of public information workshops. So on, uh, excuse me, January thirty-first, we're gonna hold our next, uh, Public Information Workshop for New Century Air Center. That's gonna be at the Gardner Justice Center off of Moonlight Road. They have a nice big community center. They have a nice big community center or community room there. So that'll be held on January thirty first from six o'clock to um, eight o'clock. It is an open uh, workshop, so people can just come and go as their time allows. There's no official public presentation. We'll have boards set up. People can come in, have a one-on-one conversation with the consultant, with staff. Talk about board, the boards, make it kind of a really good personal, personal experience. The next Public Information Workshop for the Executive Airport will be held on February seventh. Out at the uh, Executive Airport with the same type of setup. Uh, we are publicizing this through the airports. Uh, their Facebook page, we're uh, we're tagging Johnson County, we're tagging City of Olathe, we're tagging um, City of Overland Park and the City of Gardner and their public information. Their P I Os, our Public Information Officers are also sending that out. And so we're trying to get the word out as much as possible. Now, on top of um, the uh. PAC meeting and on top of our public information meetings, we do have a website that can be accessed. By either through the planning website page or somebody can go in actually through the Airport Commission page. There's two separate links on the Johnson County website. That'll take us right to, take somebody right to um. To the webpage. But if you just go to either the planning page here, or you can go to the Airport Commission. We have a Airport Land Use Update page. And on this page, uh, we'll have um, information, we'll have our draft documents as they're made available. So the public can go in and take a look at them. We've got our public involvement and our public, um, so if you want to look at the boards that was available at our first set of meetings. You can come in, you can, uh, the public can take a look at the boards. They can leave uh, comments either by the website or uh, they can email the planning staff. Or they can um, leave uh, comments at the Public Information Workshop. So um, we're really excited that we're starting to get some traction and hopefully this fall, we'll be bringing uh, draft plans. We'll go to the Airport Commission for a recommendation of approval. We'll be coming before this board for a recommendation approval. Because those plans will have to be incorporated into our Johnson County Rural Comprehensive Plan. And ultimately, we'll be able to take two recommendations of approval to the Board of County Commissioners. And with that, I'm available for questions.
I just have a question, Kelly Rast, or basically overall, is the overall feeling been favorable and good and everything going smoothly?
Yeah, we've actually, at our first two meetings, we had a turnout from the public of between fifteen and twenty people. And we've had some really good uh, conversations with people. Um, we're just trying to make sure we're stressing to people that we're not trying to restrict development on property. Uh, we're not trying to tell the cities how they should be um, setting up the zoning or their comprehensive plan. This is really an effort between the county and the cities. We've got people from Oval and Park, from uh, Gardner, from uh, Olathe are also part of our Planning Advisory Committee meeting. We also have people from the Airport Commission on this meeting. We're really trying to make sure we're pulling lots of people in and getting a lot of different points of view. To make sure we're, we're coming to um, a consensus on making sure that people can use their property. But we also need to make sure we're protecting our operations of our county airport. That is really what our goal is, is we need to protect, make sure that we're not pinning in operations of the airport. Um, really um, is important for New Century Air Center. As that is the bigger airport, that is the busier airport. And there's a lot of large aircraft that come in and out of that airport every day.
If you like, Sean Pendley Planner Staff, I'd like to add to what Michelle said. The one thing I will mention that to the point, uh, how is it going? I think so far for those public workshops we've had, as Michelle said, they've gone great. Public has been uh, showing up at the Public Information Meetings, our PAC meetings are going well with the committee. What will be interesting is next Monday, as Michelle mentioned, we do have a development forum, a development open um, open house meeting before that committee meeting. That's where we'll get some very specific comments from the development community. That, that's really the, the group that we, we, we want to get their input to. They're definitely stakeholders and they are the ones probably have the most interest in what happens with our compatibility plans. Because they're the ones developing around the airport and they have to go through this process for these airport reviews. So we should get some very good comments. We've, we've talked with many of them already about these uh, potential updates. And they'll, they'll have some very specific requests and that'll be a part of this overall process. We'll, we'll be able to present more after we've had those meetings with the development community as well.
This is Michelle with uh, Johnson County Planning, just to kind of dovetail on uh, what Sean just said about next Monday's meeting with the developers. The feedback I've gotten from the developers is that they're very excited to be part of this process. Um, they were very enthusiastic and I've had a few who were unfortunately unable to come. But they were, you know, I, I, that's when I said, you know, if you can't come, I go, please come to the Public Information Workshop. Just because they're having the stakeholder meeting. Anybody's welcome to the Public Information Workshop. We, we want people to come, we want to hear what they're saying, so, and it's important.
Absolutely, more, you include everybody upfront, I think the better.
Absolutely, I agree with you.
Yeah, Commissioner Garcia, um, I just wanted to thank you for the amount of public outreach that you're doing to get the community involved. I was curious if there was any um, outreach. I know that most neighborhoods now have Facebook pages. And I'm curious if there's been any um, you know, kind of any outreach to those particular neighborhood committees around these airports to, you know, just to increase public awareness and involvement.
I, I believe it's all getting picked up on the next door. Um, I think and uh, with the one that we had over at the Executive Airport, that's where they had picked it up, was on next door. Um, also, um, County Manager Penny, um, Post Oak Ferguson, this Thursday will actually also give an update during her manager's report for next Tuesday's Public Information Workshop as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Roger Mason, a question, uh, where will that meeting be here for the developers?
It'll be down in the lower level. It's the basement level, room two oh one. So as you, as you come downstairs, you'll kind of go around the stairs, uh, and then it'll be the room on, the first room on the right.
Dave Johns, is that the same place for the four o'clock?
That's correct. Yeah, and I would also, real quick, just like to extend a thank you to Dave Johns and Randy Downing as their liaison from this, from this board to uh, the, our Planning Advisory Committee, because their, their voice as part of the, this board is very impactful.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, continuing, Mr. Chairman, Jay Leipzig, Planning Director. Just a additional comment to Commissioner Garcia about the uh, the county's Facebook page also has notifications about these meetings as well. Um, as another uh, next item, the, the quick update on the Sunflower Army Ammunition Conceptual Land Use Plan. And Diane Wicklund is here to provide an update on that item.
Diane Wicklund, Planning Department. Uh, so just a quick update on the progress of the update of the Sunflower Area Plan. Uh, so just a reminder that Planning Commission um, established a subcommittee of five Planning Commission members uh, in order to discuss, review and provide uh, recommendations uh, for options on updating that nineteen ninety-eight uh, Sunflower Plant Area Plan uh, due to the recent annexations by the City of De Soto. Uh, the subcommittee has had three meetings and a bus tour uh, so far of the area. Uh, the purpose of the meetings uh, so, so far have been to gather information from various uh. County departments such as Public Works, uh, Waste Water District, the Environmental Department, uh, Parks and Recreation District and the City of De Soto. Uh, based on initial uh, recommendations from the subcommittee, uh, the staff has drafted uh, two options uh, that the subcommittee uh, will discuss at their next meeting, uh, which is actually currently scheduled for this Friday. Um, however, that may, uh, may need to be uh, rescheduled. Um, so at the next uh, m- meeting, um, staff anticipates that the subcommittee will discuss the suggested options. Uh, and then final, uh, and then hopefully finalize their recommendations, which will then be forwarded to the full Planning Commission here for discussion. Uh, hopefully in March or April. Um, and then also we are working on uh, scheduling a public information. Uh, you know, before the Planning Commission would uh, make their own recommendations and, and hold a public hearing. So uh, finally, just uh, quickly to go over, so uh, similar to the uh. Airport plans, um, on the Planning Department's webpage, uh, there's a section here for the Sunflower Area Plan Update. And if you just click on uh, that second link, um, so you can see here, this kind of describes uh, the area plan update. Uh, we have a link to the air, current plan. Um, just some background information on the uh, Sunflower Plant. Um, and then the purpose and why we're doing the area plan update. And then just the work plan for the subcommittee. Here, and then uh, kind of most important, and down here towards the end is the uh. Um, all the meeting materials from the meetings that we've had so far. We've also uh, recorded or streamed those meetings, so um, uh, anybody can go on here and look at the uh. Video recordings and um, have that information uh, available and then the staff presentation. So um, we're excited to get that up, up on the, on the website as well. So um, I don't know if uh, Mr. Iler for Mr. Mason has any uh, because they're on the subcommittee, uh, any additional comments. But that's kind of a quick summary.
Just a, a quick comment. Uh, we've had some excellent presentations by people from Johnson County and from De Soto uh, that have been really informative. Uh, it does appear that the people in De Soto have got their act together. And are really getting ready for the big changes that are going to occur. And I think the opportunities that this gives to Johnson County are, are tremendous, including, you know, the ability to develop uh, more parkland and uh. Really make sure that what goes on out there is consistent with what is currently in our plan and, but makes room for the future. All right.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair, Jay Leipzig, again, one more quick update. As I mentioned, um, in March, the uh, City of Overland Park will be presenting for the Planning Commission on their Framework O P uh, comprehensive plan update. They're, they're actively working on that. I believe there, that is about a, a, it's about a year and a half project. So this will kind of the early introductory uh, pha- phase of that project when they come before you in March. In February, as I mentioned, I'd like to have a kind of a follow-up uh, uh, public meeting, uh, or training, a, a session with our um, Chief Legal Counsel Peg Trent. To further elaborate on some of the, the training materials we went through in, in September, just because there were, there were so many slides and so much information presented in that. We thought would be best to have another, an additional meeting to talk about that as well. So we do have that scheduled in, on February the twenty eighth. And the last item I wanted to, to mention is that uh, uh, for several years, we have staff, we, we talked about sending a couple of Planning Commission members to our um, annual um, National American Planning Association Conference. And uh, I don't believe that it's been done in the past with Johnson County Planning. But I'd like to uh, make an offer to do that. We, we have put some money in our budget for this, this year and in subsequent years uh, to, to do that. To send two Planning Commission members to the uh, National Conference. And this year it's in Philadelphia. It's April first through the fourth. Uh, it's usually, it begins on a uh, on a Sunday, I think April first is a Sunday. And uh, um, usually, usually concludes on a Tuesday. So it doesn't interfere with a lot of the work week. Uh, but if, if any of you are able or would like to attend, um, that, tho- those sessions, they're, they're really wonderful. They have nationally recognized speakers, um, variety of top topics that uh, concern um, uh, city and urban and county planning. Uh, to, to participate in that, and they're usually very high quality presentations as well. Um, in addition to the in-person um, conference, there's also a virtual conference, which I believe is April twenty sixth to the twenty eighth. That will be uh, available by Zoom. And so if you're not able to attend the, the, the conference in person, uh, we'll be able to attend it virtually. But I would like, if, if, if a couple of Planning Commission members are, are available to attend that conference in person, uh, we'd love to have you. So if you would, just, just let me know if, if you have an interest in doing that. Uh, we typically have sent four staff uh, on a rotation basis every year to that. Uh, for example, this, this year it's in Philadelphia. I think next year, I believe it's in Minneapolis, Minnesota. Um, and then I think year after that, it's in Chicago. I believe, but it varies in, in different, in cities around the country. But it's always a, a, a great chance to uh, uh, first of all, meet other Planning Commissioners, meet other, other planners. Uh, and find out some, some of the latest trending topics in, in city planning.
If, if you would, put that into an email to the entire Planning Commission, so those who aren't here tonight can be aware of it.
Okay. Is there a um, a meeting agenda or conference information that you can attach to it?
There is, yes, I could be happy to do that, for sure. And that concludes my report.
That's great.
I have, this Kelly Rast, I do have one question, which kind of might bring us back to I. So I was wondering, because I think it's very important for everybody on this board to always know what the county commissioners are go, are doing. And since we've just had two amazing reports, that kind of highlights effectiveness of communication, public awareness, public involvement and all that. Um, and I personally, I like to zoom in to county commissioner meetings on nine thirty on Thursday mornings, because I can't always make it. But to me, that gives me a little, a lot of insight of what's important to citizens, plus also like does help me with my job here. So I was wondering if you'd like to touch on, you know, some of the communication changes.
We are um, certainly really focusing on that. I, I know.
Well, specifically what Mike Kelly, the chairman, has brought up recently.
Yeah, we, we do have a new chair and uh, we've had, I think, two meetings so far in January. One of the things that the changes he has implemented is, is the public comment portion of the meeting is not broadcast over Zoom. Um, it is, uh, it is recorded, uh, but it's not broadcast over Zoom. Um, but uh, so. We're watching online, you'll see the meeting, the introduction of the meeting. They go through the Pledge of Allegiance, the uh, the quorum and, and the roll call. And then they'll go into the public comment section and the screen says, I believe, just uh, Board of County Commissioners meeting in process. And then when they're, when they are completed with the public comment portion, then the uh, uh, they, the broadcast will start again. Uh, the other changes, he, he's made a couple of small um, procedural changes concerning uh, motions, when, when motions are read. Uh, for example, um, what happens now is the uh, the, the chairman reads the item on the agenda. Uh, whereas the clerk did that previously, actually reads the item. Uh, and then a commissioner will make a motion on the uh, for approval on the ver, the item, whatever it might be. Uh, and then staff makes their presentation and then there's public comment. And then there's, then there's a vote on the, on the motion. So it's, it's a little bit different.
And there are a few other limiting factors for the public, like you have to be there in person. Uh, the sign up, so there's a few things that are directly affecting public, the ease of public comment and public being more available to hear a hundred percent transparency of what's going on.
Mr. Rast, I'm not as, as informed of that. Um, uh, it, there is a, a detailed description of that on the county's website too. Uh, I apologize, I just, I, I kind of focus on the um.
Do you want me to read it?
I'll then comment period.
Actually, I don't think that's part of our agenda tonight.
Well, it's other business of the board and that's what's going on in the board.
That is not going on.
Okay, I'll, I'll let you talk after I speak and we'll take turns, how about that? I won't interrupt you and you won't interrupt me. It is important, as part of our job, we need to know what the citizens are doing. They come and speak to us. The next phase is the county commissioners, though, we, we are all overlapping. And so it is important that we are all aware of what each other's doing. And I think anytime public comments or public is being shut out, I think everybody should be concerned. And I'll leave it at that.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
Well, just, just.
Roger Mason, so moved.
Okay. I, okay, well, without a second, I guess I would just say, this is Commissioner Garcia, I'm always interested. And I think the Planning Commission benefits from hearing whether there are um, additional requests of our staff members to see and then, you know, improve public transparency and awareness. And so I'm always willing to listen to any information about what's going on the Board of County Commissioners, especially as it relates to public transparency. Improving the public's awareness of what we do in these meetings.
George Lynn, I agree, I think that's important. Before I second, I just want to say that.
Are you seconding now, George?
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we adjourn. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.